Good evening, welcome to the planning board for Tuesday, June 16th, 2015. We'll start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Tom Young, Chair.
Mike Caprulio, Vice Chair.
Matt Schumaker, Member.
Mike Frodo, Member.
Missing is Steve Perry, Jason Garette, and Russ Blanchett. This time I'd like to convene a public hearing. Please take notice that in accordance with the Hampshire RSA 675 dot seven, the Litchfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 16th, 2015 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall. Meeting Room Two Liberty Way to consider the following changes to the Litchfield zoning regulations. Appendix A, road design requirements, Section 5 dot 6, C and D, road maintenance bond, to correct the errors in the bond example and remove requirements for granite curb intersections. Tonight, the planning board will first present the information on the items for consideration. We'll take public input following which the board will close the hearing and proceed with deliberations. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak? Not appearing, the public input is closed. I'd like to present this for consideration. Any questions of the board?
The one we didn't mention was update the E and R factor, that was on the one on the website. Is that still part of this?
It is, yeah.
Okay, so just for the record. I think this is all administrative?
Any more questions on it? If not, can I entertain a motion?
Sure. Motion to approve the changes to Appendix A, updating the E and R adjustment factor, correcting the example, and removing the requirement in Exhibits B and C for the straight granite curb to be installed at intersections.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Age of deliberation, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, opposed, passes four zero zero. Next we'll go up the master plan update. Very good job Jen, it looks good so far.
Yeah, it's just a little bit of progress so far. Started with the executive summary, the most complete resources you have that you've worked on over the past few years is all informative to the vision. So what I did was just simply go through the executive summary, the first two parts of it. I have not touched the progress section yet, we'll get to that in the next round of edits here. But just focusing on the vision section, the edits that were made here focused on a few different things. One, just updating to reflect most recent planning efforts that you've undertaken, to incorporate some of the discussion you've had in the last few meetings. And also using the crosswalk that we had prepared a few years back where we, when we did the initial survey, where we said, here are the survey findings and here are the related components of the vision. Just update it to make sure that those components of the vision best reflected the survey results. Also tossed in there the word art, or the word cloud from the past planning effort, figure, you know, a few illustrations don't hurt and liven it up, still applicable. So that's the big picture of what's been done so far. Just a quick update on progress that's ongoing behind the scenes that you don't see here yet. I do have one of our GIS analysts working on updating the analysis of existing land use. And so that is in, was it chapter eight, no, chapter eight I think is the land use chapter. And so she's going through and tabulating all of your existing land use, developed areas, as well as running the calculations of developable land within each of the zoning districts. And to do that, we start by calculating the area in the zoning district itself, then subtracting out those areas that we know are developed. And then subtracting out those areas that we know are constrained via, with natural resources that are undevelopable under your current zoning ordinance. And then getting the resultant area of developable land. So she's currently working on that, we hope to have a draft of those results at your next meeting, which I believe is the third Tuesday in July.
Twenty first.
Alright, so that's what I've given her as a target to have everything ready for, so.
Fourth of July week is not a good week for meetings.
No, summer gets challenging for meetings, period, so. With that, I figure I'd throw it out there for just general feedback. There are a couple comments, questions that are kind of posted in the margins there.
Yeah, number three, I agree with you, taking out that one bullet.
He had the maintain and enhance the quality of education through sound planning and adequate facilities.
I don't know, I looked at that, I looked at bullet point number five, and the way I read bullet point number five was really more of making sure that we're spending responsibly. But the way that I'm reading that bullet point is really talking about ensuring we have quality. And I think that those are two important points. I mean, obviously, I think, you know, obviously we have to have something that focuses on being fiscally responsible. But I think the quality of education is very important, and I don't want that to be overlooked if we remove that.
Well, you just added to the end of the other one.
Yeah.
That's fine if we want to merge them.
For economic development while maintaining and enhancing the quality of education, local schools through sound planning and adequate facilities.
Sure.
But just.
Okay.
Develop it while, and then add it to that and combine it, but I agree, I mean.
Okay.
Money's important, but quality of education is too, and that shouldn't be stricken completely.
Let's see, so I went through this, on page one, I thought that the additions were good. Obviously, we've talked a little bit about the different sections that you list, the A through O there. We've talked about what we might want to focus on. And I just made a point to check off the things again that I am personally thinking about. I did, I start off community facilities, economic development, recreation section, and community design section, we talked about that a lot last week. On the second page, I like that you added another point. I didn't have a lot of time to really think about how I might amend it, but I think there's more that I'd like to add to that. And I'll try to make a point to sit down with that for a little bit more for next time.
If you want, and you know, when you get your thoughts in order on that, you just send them right to Jen.
Okay.
I can send you the Word file, too. The Word file just gets all funky when we post it to the Google site.
Okay.
Yeah. Google doesn't like to track changes.
That way she can have it in there.
Whatever works for you.
Strike it out after if you change your mind.
I'm also happy with scribbles scanned and sent, too, so. I'm not picky.
Was a foster enhanced sense of community spirit in Litchfield an addition? You just separated that, why is that a red bullet?
Where?
Above, to preserve the true character. Would that just move down on how the original copy?
I, that's just word being word.
Okay, so that wasn't changed, that was there before?
Oh, yeah, that one liner, foster and enhance a sense of community spirit in Litchfield, that was there.
Okay.
I hit return and it decided to make that one bullet look like the added bullet. But the language in the next bullet is the new language.
Okay.
And that was, that fourth bullet was what was sent to me by Steve Perry as his thoughts for what the vision should be. So it's just added in here for discussion purposes at this point. I haven't edited to remove or alleviate any redundancy, flow, anything to that effect.
Did he expand on the, you two continue to, the expansion of town resources to make them more readily available? What resources is he talking about?
Hold on. Where?
In that, in that bullet.
Second sentence.
The second sentence in that bullet, to also continue the expansion of town resources. What resources?
Ask Steve Perry.
Okay. Because I don't know what that means.
I don't know.
I think he meant parks, too, like not just. We were talking about rec fields on Page Road, we were talking about, I guess you could refer to gas line, you know, the gas line up north that's going to Continental, that's a resource.
Well, but it's not a town resource.
No, but the resource could offer town residents by expanding gas service.
If the town picks up.
Yeah.
The service, you know, and that, that's a big, that's a big, big nugget, is if town is, you know, going to invest in providing utility.
But I think all these things are meant to be very general, aren't they? You never have like, here are the 10 things I'm recommending, it's more of a philosophical statement.
Yeah, your vision, yeah, and that's the way this piece is written. So you've got the vision and then you've got these subs, so you've got the three original bullets plus one newly proposed bullet under vision. And then you've got these additional bullets which were, the way it was initially, it was previously presented was a little bit confusing, they almost read like these were goals, but then you had to hold another separate section of goals. These really just kind of expound upon the vision and, and how it relates to the larger body of the master plan and the various components of the master plan. So they go into a little bit more detail, but still not a lot. For example, the final bullet, I edited it to, updated it to reflect current status, this is the transportation one, but reading it and comparing it to the preceding bullets, I wasn't as comfortable with it because it's citing specific improvements, which I think were better suited to that goals and objectives section as opposed to the larger conceptual vision of what the town would like to see. So that's just, it just stood out as being a little bit distinct amongst those statements.
And in my opinion, as I've seen how conversations begin to develop, is when you start to have overarching themes of providing town resources and these kind of things, the conversation inevitably starts to move towards, we're going to start providing and moving in this direction. When, when myself, again, it's, you know, we all live in different circles, the talk of providing town services in that way is not meant for Litchfield. I mean, again, maybe it's just the folks that I live with and speak to every day, but nobody's talking about providing anything beyond like fields and things like that. So I don't think of what we're thinking of sitting at this table, I'm thinking of what people are going to assume further down the line and saying, oh, no, no, we've always talked about providing town resources, you know? And so that's, that's why I'm being very cautionary about how we discuss providing town services.
But you're not doing it in specifics besides saying that the town, I mean, it's just a general statement.
That's the problem with it, Mike, is because today and here and now, we may decide what we feel about that, but in a year and a half from now, when it's a whole different crew in here for, you know, if that's what it is, or whomever's going to use that statement, or that vision, or that concept to proceed on something else, is then going to say, what does that really mean? Well, they're going to interpret it to mean whatever they wish it to be.
Wouldn't, sorry, wouldn't we divide, wouldn't we be defining that in our goals, though?
Well, that's why I'm just adding caution to the wind, you know what I'm saying? And if we choose to add that to our goals to further define what town resources mean, then so be it, I just.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good, I think it's a good cautionary point.
You know, because then you start, you start rolling down an inevitability that causes people to become upset who don't, or choose not to want that for this town, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, and, and actually, kind of speak to that specifically. So the last update was down in 2002. And while an implementation plan was one of the listed chapters that a master plan could have in 2002, it was not a common chapter to find. Most communities at that point, you know, 10, 15 years ago, were really keeping their master plans really vague. Here's the big picture issues in our community, but weren't getting specific into the actions that they were proposing that the community take. Since that time, it has, best practice has said, that's not really the way to go. If you're going to say, here's our goals, you need to follow that up with, what are we going to do? What is it that we are proposing be done to achieve and implement these goals? And so then, that direction that you're looking for would be spelled out in an implementation plan, in where you would identify, okay, here are the top priorities within our community, here are the actions that can and should be taken to achieve these goals, here is who can achieve, who would be responsible for their implementation and achieving results, here are the anticipated results. Sometimes we tie it to metrics to show that, that it truly has been successful, to measure and quantify that, that impact. What is the fiscal impact, what is the cost to the community? Is there an existing budget line for this? Is this something that there are resources for today on hand? So there's quite a bit that can go into that implementation plan to make sure that it's grounded in reality and then, then really demonstrates and provides that roadmap to future boards and future board members as to what your true intent was. And that helps take that ambiguity out of, of the document. And so, might be something to consider as you move forward.
Yeah, I think we should definitely include an implementation section.
Well, you know, it's funny that this is the time of year for me in building my capital budgets. And so it's kind of like the same kind of thing.
Exactly.
You have this vision of where we're trying to take, you know, our property and, and when you start discuss, you know, there's dollars attached to that. So when you say something like, we're going to, you know, provide building services or whatever, you know what I'm saying? It, there are steps that have to be taken if.
Right.
If you're going to talk about providing services, whatever they are.
Financial.
Piece to that, that, you know, people start to ask, well, what does that mean? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Like the fields as an example, right? The fields, great looking fields, everything, everybody loves them, right? But there wasn't a discussion in this town about those fields, they showed up. You know what I'm saying? And I know a lot of folks that were really like, how did that happen?
Well, when we give the update on the committee stuff for the Page Road, because I did attend that, that's something that I will talk about for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Just because that is, it's a very important piece.
It is a very important piece.
But I think that we have to, you know, we just have to make sure that that's, and again, I think by adding an implementation section, we, we make sure that we address that. But I think that, you know, it's, I think it's okay to talk broadly about what ideas might be, but it does have to be followed up with, what are the implications of, yeah.
Because if we really want to provide town services, we do, we need to have, don't, don't just say it. If that's, if that's what we're going to do, then we need to spell that out. What are we going to do and how are we going to fund it? And what do we, what do we, otherwise we're wasting the time.
Right.
What is the coastal management section? I assume river?
Not really applicable to our.
Okay, so that.
Anyone in our region.
Thank God.
It'd be applicable only to those, you know, in those 18 miles of coastline that we have.
I thought you added it in because it's in red, so like, why did you put it in?
No, it's added in red because that section here in that list is reflective of what's in state statute. And it's, it's direct, it's a direct list of what's in state statute.
Oh, the river's beautiful.
I know, I was writing it, and I'm like, do I just leave this out because it is not remotely applicable?
By law, does it have to be bookmarked?
No, and we could dump it and not even list it. It's, it's allowed, but it's, if we got a coastal section and.
I mean technically Riverbank is, is Riverbank coastal?
No, they're talking about ocean.
Is a Riverbank coastal? No, okay. Yeah, that doesn't apply.
Okay.
Alright. I think it was a dumb question, but I bring it up.
Unless we're going to have public transportation to the beach here, so maybe we would have to take them.
Would that cost anything? Causeway?
A canal to, a tunnel? One of the sections that you, you highlighted was land use and how that, or, not that you highlighted, but one of the sections in here was land use and the importance of land use in terms of like being the sort of ground level for everything. And we did mention in one of the notes that we would talk about community design, time permitting. I think if, if land use is one pillar of what everything else should be built off of, I do think that community design also, I'm just reiterating what my point that I'm going to reiterate every meeting, should, should also be a consideration because I think that that helps people understand when we talk about other pla, you know, plans for things, it helps people understand what we're really envisioning with that, not so much of an abstract.
Me, you're going to get along, we're going to say the same things over and over till I forget.
Perfect. They'll understand us, actually.
Okay, so, just in terms of workflow, what I would propose is we've already flagged to start with the executive summary, the goals, and the land use section. The goals, I, that one I think we're going to kind of go back and forth with because it does touch upon all of the chapters. So I'd like to get through the executive summary and update the land use section. And then if you guys want to start with community design after we complete executive summary and land use, then we can go to community design if that works.
Yep.
Okay, because we have so much that's like right at our fingertips, ready to start those other sections and update them that.
Perfect.
Makes sense, and then we can, if that works.
I think that's all I have for notes on this. Okay, what else have anything?
No.
She's good stuff.
I don't have that one in concern.
Well, I would just, I'd ask all of you just to kind of look back at, and send me any comments specifically on your thoughts of the four bullets. I know Steve's not here tonight to kind of talk about what he had shared with that one, with the question on resources there. So just think about how, you know, that's one person's thoughts, you know, there's five of you here still. So we need to make sure that everybody's voices are reflected in that. So those four bullets, just general thoughts, merge, change, toss, however. If you think it's fine the way it is and it doesn't need the suggestion, that's legitimate as well.
In the, in the section, it says a, what is it, regional concern section? Can we change that to regional impact section, or?
It is in statute called a regional concerns section. You could address, the regional concerns would, you know, look at concerns of, that potentially have regional impact. So things that are going on outside of your community that you feel impacts your community and wherein you want to work with your neighbors to recognize that things that they're doing has impacts on you, and vice versa, so that if there were things happening in Litchfield that had impacts on communities outside the town and you wanted to, again, collaborate with your commu, your neighbors, or just general things that are of mutual interest to multiple communities in the area. Say the Merrimack River where you share frontage, you know, you get Merrimack right on the other side. That might be something, it's a shared resource, where things that people do in other communities impact your ability to enjoy that resource.
Still going to get here, what, do we have a forum where like us, Lund and Derry Hudson and Merrimack get together every now and then and discuss?
Yep. We're trying to get something going.
Yeah.
And it'll probably be this fall.
Right, it'd be a good idea if we could kind of, you know, maybe quarterly or maybe semi-annual, but just to touch base and see, you know, because as an example is this Kinder Morgan thing, right? Where, you know, we start to, you know, kind of try to coordinate things that are common. I mean, there's going to be a lot of things we'll never, you know, see.
We have, we have.
Well, that's what the regional planning commissions exist for.
We have, we have met with Hudson.
Yeah.
In a joint meeting. And Russ and I, I was in London Dairy. That was when we had the, for the shooting range.
Yeah.
And London Dairy is very susceptible for us to come over there and have a joint meeting with them.
Yeah, yeah.
It's something we're trying to work in for the fall.
Right, and maybe it is on our, you know, our, it's on our, on us to, you know, go to London Dairy or go to Merrimack.
Yeah, well, see, London Dairy, because of the, the commercial district over there they're putting in.
Yeah.
With all the employees that are going to be having there.
Yeah, it's a big impact.
It's going to be an impact on us, on the roads and on housing.
Yeah, I mean, it's huge, I went through there the other day.
It's it.
Biggest building I think I've ever seen in my life. Beyond the Pentagon.
Yeah, beyond the Pentagon, on Pentagon Road.
Is that FedEx?
No, there's something else. There's FedEx up there.
There's FedEx and UPS, both.
Who's in the new building?
I don't know who's in there.
They have a sign outside, I forgot the name of it.
But I think that's just going to be the beginning, too, because I can see the roads changing over there.
Well, Pennington, it takes, it's nice, actually, because you can make a right there.
Yeah, but I mean from the airport.
Can you get through now?
Well, you go around, they get you around without going to the airport, and through the circles.
But just where Unicast is.
Up towards Harvey Road.
I think you'll find that that road is made bigger.
What is Pennington Road going through now?
Yeah, because I can't see them offloading containers, emptying them to take them to a warehouse.
Right.
I can see the airport trucks going right over to the warehouse for them, from the runway.
On that side of the road, yeah, on that side there.
Down that end, yeah. Which would be perfect for them.
It's Pennington dumps off right there, right before Harvey Road there.
Right.
I'm thinking, obviously, we don't have a coast, but.
Yeah.
We could, what about having a, just a brief section like a, I'm just suggesting this, like a river corridor section or something to do with the Merrimack that kind of relates to Litchfield?
With the natural resource section.
Natural resource section?
Yeah, or something.
And we could do something, something within there.
Yeah, that's the third bullet, Jen.
No, E. Oh, no, that's hazard. D.
And if they dredge this river, we can put in transportation, too.
I did, I'm, I'm, the board of this, the Conservation Commission, I did mention that we're working on the master plan. They wanted to, at some point, schedule a meeting with you folks to maybe talk about things that they might want to see.
You folks as in us or them?
What's that?
Us folks or them?
Well, no, to discuss with us.
Okay. Well, y'all said you folks, I was thinking also.
What they, they had, they had some suggestions and they wanted to see if we could schedule something at some point to do that.
It's a great idea.
I, throwing that in now just to let you guys know that that was discussed.
It's a great idea, should also grab the zoning board as well.
Yeah. And I'm sure that, you know...
And the Rec Commission.
Mm-hmm.
And the Rec Commission and other commission and the boards and, you know.
Yeah, we can, we can do that all in one joint meeting once we get a little further along. Yeah, probably have more than...
Yeah.
All right, anything else on that, Joe? Okay.
Feel free at any point to send me comments, edits. If you want a Word file, just let me know and I'll send it to you. And just make sure if you're sending comments and edits, you just send them to me and I will make sure to plunk them into the document so that the full group can review it in a public forum. Plunk.
Good work.
I figure it's appropriate because if you send me stuff, I'm not gonna edit what you say, I'm gonna take your words and I'm gonna plunk it in. I may correct grammar on occasion, or typos, but that's it.
Okay, LC engineering reports.
Yes, I put that on there today because his reports are addressed to the planning board, so you should be aware that Lou sends us these reports. The first one is Annandale, they did put the, one into wearing courses on the whole thing now. Kevin and I are gonna go look at the landscape plan which we have versus what is out there. That's his question in number three about the restoration plan. We do have that plan right here. The phase four and five, we were going to look at. The bigger question is, there was, there is still a performance bond on here when they built it. We've always gotten that on all of the private roads so that we know that they're built correctly. Question is, the maintenance bond. Kevin is of the opinion, and I, Lou wants, wants an answer because he doesn't think we've had a maintenance bond on other properties because they're private roads, we know they're built correctly, maintenance bond is just for late, blatant problems that may come up in the next two years. And we, I don't believe we've had maintenance bonds on other properties, privately.
I can't see, really see a need for it because number one, it's not gonna have the truck traffic that a road would have.
Right, it's a private road, right.
Number two, it is a private road, it's not under the town's control at all.
Right, if it, if something...
If it fails, they don't have to deal with it.
If it fails, even with the maintenance bond, if it fails, the town has nothing to do with it.
Nothing to do with it.
Right, if it fails, the association wouldn't have to go back to whoever built it or the developer. So is that safe to say that we don't need a maintenance bond?
I don't think we do.
I don't, I can't say, does anybody feel we do want it?
No.
Well, you only, you said that there's no town interest, I mean, the town, I would imagine that the town's interest would be relative to like emergency services, right? If there was an issue, being able to provide emergency services.
Right, but the town still has no control over the road. They can, they can recommend that we, like, if there's big sinkholes, they can recommend we fix them. They can't make you because it's under private ownership.
Right.
Not that anybody would let it go that way.
Right. But it'd be just like, you know, you've got, not that it would happen, I suppose, you know, you had a junkyard in your yard and a fire truck can't get in because, you know, it's...
And this is the second largest development, so that if they did have a problem, they have, you know, it would spread the cost across the board to all of them, so that they, I'm sure, would fix it because, you know, like you say, it's emergency service.
Well, that's in all the bylaws anyway.
Right, it's in their CAM, so.
To keep them maintained. Okay. All right, so like I said, Kevin and I will look at the landscape plan as opposed to what's growing up there now. Get back to Lou on that. The second one was Pine Creek, that I just inserted so that you knew that Lou had been up there, that's up to Ashwood Homes, it's Ashwood, right? To get that all corrected. We do have a bond on, construction bond on that. And the third one was Hamel Circle Extension, again, just to let you know that Lou's been out there and those are the issues, and that's under construction. That's just got the, where, the base course on it. And there's about three foundations in on that new, new section.
Just as a general, for those of you who didn't have the pleasure to go through the process of updating the, of Appendix A, the road requirements a few years back, Appendix A is where all the bonding requirements are and it sets forward just the general basics for what the bonds are required for, what the procedures are for releasing a bond, and what is required for bonding. And that covers both the performance bond and the maintenance bond provisions. So those are, they're in Appendix A and for them to...
It doesn't specifically call out private roads, right?
No, I think it treats all roads the same.
But we'll make sure, have Lou make sure that the bounds are in on the property and that kind of thing.
Right, and before a bond can be released, the applicant has to submit a request in writing to the board to do so. Then the board can vote to approve the release and then the selectmen authorize that final release of the bond. And this treats all roads the same, it does not specify whether they're public or private roads.
Committee reports. Just a quick, quick update, Friday morning at the NRPC, we had a meeting with Kinder Morgan and Portland Gas. A very interesting meeting. Tomorrow night, preliminary report will, draft report will be presented at the NRPC meeting at seven o'clock in Merrimack. Maybe we'd like to go. And once that is done, it will have a copy forwarded here to everybody electronically, so you'll have it.
That's the preliminary report on...
On the gas pipeline.
Right, but on environmental issues, on everything?
Everything that NRPC has been involved in, yeah.
Okay.
I believe the Hudson BOS is gonna have an open hearing too.
Yep.
I believe it's tonight.
Tonight, yeah.
So, we had a committee meeting for the development offer, or the potential development off of Page Road, where Mr. Charbonneau plans to, or hopes to pull sand from that lot and then develop it into fields. He met with us last, two weeks ago and showed us some, I guess, mock plans about what, what could potentially go there. He's very open to doing anything that the town may want. One of the biggest considerations that we did discuss though is having those types of facilities, we do need to look at what the implications are for maintenance. Obviously, if you look at the, the West Road Fields, I mean, those are very nicely maintained. I would imagine that a lot goes into that, so that's something that we're gonna have to examine. But I think the first step that we're looking at, I think there's gonna be a meeting tomorrow, correct? Is discussing what the Rec Commission thinks that we need in order, in terms of how we actually want the facility developed. But he's very, very flexible in terms of giving whatever benefit to the town.
Yeah, I think, I think one time I was talking to the, mainly out of the Litchfield baseball, the youth baseball, but they were hand in hand with Rec. You know, and they'd like to be able to have kind of a facility where they can have their tournaments, because like there gets really packed in with the girls softball tournaments, things like that, and, you know, one, one area where you can do both boys and girls and or whole tournaments, because you gotta have five or six fields to be able to do that and the facilities to support it.
So, who, who runs that? Is it Litchfield Little League or...
Uh, yeah, the Litchfield, yeah.
LBA.
LBA, yeah.
Because Steve Perry was supposed to try and contact the Recreation Commission to see what they, we need to hear from them.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Andy Collins and Russ Pelham one night at the ball field and, you know, that, you know, we were talking about at, at that time was, this was before Mr. Charbonneau's conversations, but over by, at GMS there where, you know, whether they could get GMS to D'd over that field, because it's technically theirs, you know, and then open that up.
They lose and maintain it.
Yeah, and then create, you know, kind of, you, you've got four or five ball fields going in different directions out there because there's enough room to do that. But on the backside of that, you know, it does take a lot, because those fields over on West Road are, are sprinkled and, you know, so you've got pumps and, you know, you've gotta, you know, there's no water there, so you didn't have to pump it, you know, so you drill wells and pump it and, and, you know, it's a little, maybe infrastructure over there.
Yeah, yeah, that's the biggest thing. I mean, there was discussion of walking trails, there's discussion of trying to connect the bike path to it.
Right.
You know, having adequate parking there, which would benefit the bike path, but also the fields, so.
And there was also discussion about that if ball fields were built, that he would make sure they were built correctly, bring in enough loam so that you wouldn't have to oversprinkle them, but, and, but it put in your irrigation system. But you're right, that would have to be maintained.
Oh, yeah, there's, yeah.
There's also good attention being paid to, you know, the implications on wildlife, implications on just the area in general. They don't feel as though, they feel as though they can develop it in such a way that won't be disruptive to the butters.
Right.
So, are, are we meeting with the Rec Commission tomorrow or no?
Haven't heard anything.
Yeah, see, and again, it's one of those chicken egg things, right? So, you know, personally, I think, you know, that's all great stuff, you know, there's nothing like having stuff donated to us. But there is a huge infrastructure cost that goes with that and that's how, in my opinion, presented to the town so that they're always kept abreast.
Right.
This is what we're getting, this is the cost to maintain, and this is what we're asking for.
And that's what, one of Mr. Charbonneau's large, biggest caveats is that if this all goes through, he wants it maintained.
Yeah.
He doesn't want it to fall into disrepair.
Of course.
We do have, you know, we, we're starting to have a lot more green space, where it does make sense to, if you're gonna have that, and if that is the overall, that's why I'm very big on community design. I mean, if one of the, you know, focal points is gonna be, we are, you know, a town with a lot of green space, it's gotta be maintained green space, or else it's just gonna be unsightly, so. So it, I think it does make sense to actually start really looking at that.
Yeah, and something that large is not the same as, say, Corning Fields where, you know, you gather in the spring with all the parents and, you know, you're raking it down.
Right.
If you have a facility, it's not, you know, twelve parents.
They know what it takes to maintain Darapon, this is three or four Darapons.
Yeah, way bigger than that, yeah.
I tried, I called Hudson way back in the beginning to see what the acreage is there. I think it's at Benson's and I think this is comparable to what Benson's has.
There's gotta be seventy-five acres or whatever that they...
Over at Benson's?
No, over on West Road, is that Benson's?
Almost ninety.
Ninety?
With the wetlands.
Yeah, oh, with the wetlands, yeah, yeah, okay.
Probably seventy-five without the wetlands. Benson's might be over a hundred, I never did get an answer out of them. Is Hudson part of NRPC?
Yeah.
Who'd you, who'd you contact? Left a message and they never called me back with someone, it's been a while.
Okay.
You have their mast, you must have their master plan? Probably should be, I mean, their, their town master plan.
We can, we can, we can butt hole Rick if you stay tomorrow night.
You can butt Rick.
About Hudson? No, I'm not talking about Benson's, he wouldn't know, he might know what the acreage is.
He would, yeah.
Rick would. I can contact Town Planner if you want.
Yeah, I'd just like to have a ballpark figure because they've done a decent job over there. I was concerned in the beginning because it was really a wild area and I was concerned they'd overdevelop it, but I don't think that they have, they've done a fairly decent job over there.
Even Laffa over London Dairy, you know, behind the tire station, you know, that's not nearly as big, I don't think, I think fifty acres, forty acres, but, you know.
How far does that go back behind where that playground is? How far does the wooded area go back over there, London Dairy?
Oh, it goes far, it goes far. Because, I, I mean, honestly, you just play softball down, down the hill there, but didn't realize how far back the fields went.
Well, behind us, behind the, I guess it's softball, there's parking and then there's that playground, decent playground side of the area. And then behind that, there's woods, but I don't know how much they own.
Yeah, and then there's fields up on high, because I, I was just there the other day, yeah. There's, there's a BAE or Raytheon or somebody's got a big, it could be, it's actually probably an airport equipment, a big radar facility up on top of the hill there, that you don't even see down there. It goes way up on there, there's a field, you know, for the, for the older kids, way up on the...
How do you get back there?
You walk.
Yeah, that, that ties in with the one in Merrimack.
Yeah.
And the one in Litchfield.
What, what are you talking about, the airport?
Test, they're all test stations.
Oh, wow, wow.
Yeah, for either BAE or...
Yep.
But there, yeah, there's a field you gotta walk up on.
Oh, plus look at all the fields on the other side of the street, behind the schools.
Yeah, yeah, well, the, the high school.
There's twenty, there's twenty-five school, uh, fields back there.
Large population in London Dairy too.
Well, you got the new fields and football.
Those are fields that don't drain at all though.
No.
It's one swamp. Yep, you have the crosshairs.
Uh-huh. One down in the pit there.
Yeah. We were there last year, it's like, you do, oh, we'll leave that ball there.
Behind London Dairy High School?
Deep below.
Yeah, there's like way down below, there's one way out there.
Oh, that's good to know.
They've cleared a lot of it out though.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I have approval of minutes for June second?
Motion to approve the minutes for June second.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Passes four, zero, one.
Who did second it?
Me.
Thank you.